Okay, the next resolution will be twenty-two dash zero zero nine. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby approve, turn the access to the CCTVs and surveillance cameras back on. The Jefferson Township trustees have the need to use the closed-circuit TV and the surveillance cameras to the intent they're originally installed for. The Jefferson Township Board trustees desire to have Buckeye remove all existing passwords and accesses to the closed-circuit TV and the surveillance system. Then provide access to all these cameras to the township that the township owns or pays for with new passwords to the three different people, the three trustees, the fire chief, and the road department superintendent.
I make a motion to approve the, to turn the access CCTV and surveillance cameras back on.
I'll second it. We'll call when you're ready, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Matt?
Yes.
Thank you. Quick. Yes. The fire chief, you know, assistant fire chief. Sorry?
He's asking the assistant fire chief.
Yeah, we need to.
He's just as important as the fire chief.
Yeah, we need to.
He said to add the assistant fire chief one here.
Yes.
You can go ahead and add an initial.
Yeah.
Or Jan.
So, resolution... Zero, 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 twenty-two dash zero zero nine has been approved with the addition of the people that can have access to the cameras with the assistant fire chief added, and it's been approved. Next. Resolution twenty-two dash zero one zero, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to have all legal matters and questions go through the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office. The Jefferson Township trustees see the need to control all the extra legal fees paid by the township. Only the township trustees in Jefferson Township may perform needed legal activities in the township, and all of these legal activities must go through the legal personnel given to the township by the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office. Whereas the Jefferson Township Board trustees desire to first have all needed legal questions, paperwork, and any other legal activities go through the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office with the personnel that the Prosecutor's Office has assigned to Jefferson Township. There will be legal matters that will go to an outside legal firm, such as insurance claims. Whereas if the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office states they cannot address the legal issues of Jefferson Township, then the board of trustees can have a public vote on how to proceed with this legal matter. If a Jefferson Township employee or trustee tries to use a billable legal service without the consent of the board of trustees by the vote in a public meeting, they will be responsible for the fees of this legal service. Whereas the use of the legal firm Sterdic, Dowd, and Turner as stated in the resolution twenty dash zero three oh to end June seventh, uh, twenty twenty will end now with the action rescinding resolution twenty dash zero three zero, and that resolution is attached.
I make a motion to agree to have all legal matters and questions go through the Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office.
I'll second that. We'll call when you're ready, Tracy.
So, just my comment.
Yes.
You want me to include it because it's not attached. You want me to include it with this?
No, 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 discretion. It does need to be attached, discretion is here.
All right, we'll call the trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Matt?
Yes.
Resolution twenty dash zero one zero passes. Yes, thank you. Okay, the next resolution is twenty-two dash zero one one. The Jefferson Township Board trustees will no longer accept handwritten timesheets starting the second pay cycle of twenty twenty-two. Starting January seventeenth, all employees must use TrackSmart to clock in and out for all township employment on township computers activated as a time clock.
So, can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
So, have the employees been trained on this yet?
No, that would happen, that's why we went to the second week, so...
And have we had, I mean, because we have the, have time to send out, send the email out for people to come in and do the training?
Okay.
And have them sign paperwork saying that they acknowledge that they need to start using their timesheet on this date so that it's fair to the employees and that they can have time, so, um, for right now, I'm kind of like table this.
Okay, I'm okay with that, let's get some more time to get it, get the bugs ironed out and...
Because I think it's important for them to go from handwritten because of error, but I think it's also important that they be trained and, and, uh, at least know about the upcoming changes.
Okay. I mean, you see the need to do it, you just want to make sure everybody's trained and doing it.
Yes.
Again, they need to sign off that they've been educated.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
No, but we just go to the next number because it's been tabled.
So, we don't use that number?
You can, but what you're gonna do is next, bring it back if you want.
We'll have to be rewritten because the dates won't be right.
Well, that's okay, but you can still bring it back and get the same thing.
Oh, use that number there, okay, okay, we'll just do that then, okay.
As long as the things made it to progress.
Yes, right. Okay, so the next resolution is twenty-one dash oh one two. The Jefferson Township Board trustees do hereby decide to turn off the cable TV service at the Kimmel Road Fire Department building.
What are we gonna do then?
I, uh, I make a motion to turn off the cable TV at the Kimmel Road Fire Department building.
I'll second that. We'll call when you're ready, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Matt?
Yes.
Oh, resolutions twenty-one dash zero one two passes.
Twenty-one?
One, two.
He said twenty-one, zero, one, two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two dash zero one two. Did you correct me? I need a help by getting, thank you very much. Well, just scratch it and, okay, let's put, we'll initial that. You believe how they changed that due to, we didn't have the meeting, then came in January, the fourth and the fifth, how many times have we do these? Okay, so, resolution, um, twenty-two dash zero one three. The Jefferson Township Board trustee do hereby decide to stop township's clout membership with the Ohio Township Association. The clout membership, there's nothing like thirteen hundred in a few townships in Ohio, and the majority of them do not belong to this, and we did not belong to it before Steve Wolf, Steve Wolf's the one that got us to do this, and I really truly, I'm just trying to save money, I don't see the advantage of spending two hundred dollars for this, so...
And the clout, it services like townships that have fifteen thousand or more.
Yes.
And we don't.
We don't, right.
We don't, so it's not, it's not for us, so...
But what is it though? I make a motion that we, you said you want to know, what you want to know?
Oh, got a question.
What is it, what is a clout membership?
Okay, clout, um, it's where the bigger, bigger townships get together and lobby for different things that townships need in the state government. Does that kind of answer it?
But you said it has to be a township of fifteen thousand or more, so it doesn't benefit us, is that right? I make a motion that we stop the township's clout membership with the Ohio Township Association.
I'll second it. We'll call when you're ready, Tracy. Yes. Resolution twenty-two dash zero one three passes. This one, she forgot to change her name, so I expect your name now, his name now, opportunity may not need initial that.
No, yeah, that works. Yes, I did.
I asked her. Will you want to correct this?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, correct, oh, oh, here?
Uh, Williams, what, uh...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how to do it, but that is...
Yes, okay, so, initial that then too?
Yeah, well, you got to initial up there and then what?
Okay, yeah, okay, so, initial cover is changing your name and covering, she had Jim Lee, yes, so... Okay, so that's it for resolutions. The next thing is department reports, it looks like the only department we have is Sheriff's Department. Capitaine, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Over November twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, month-to-month comparison, our overall crime decreased by fourteen percent. Our violent crime, though, went up forty-four percent, that was plus seven over the previous year. Part one property crimes decreased by thirty-three percent, that was forty fewer incidents. Part two violent crimes increased by eleven percent, and part two property crimes decreased by thirty-two percent. We continue to address under community concerns, complaints related to speed around the Derby, Blairwood, and Ultra areas. Deployed extra patrols through there and taking the speed trailer up pretty regularly, so anybody who lives over there should have passed it or seen it from time to time sitting out there. We do bring it in at night just because, uh, as the calendar has been some vandalism to some of the speed trails, so we take it out till about nightfall and then we try to bring it in. Some of the incidents we had over the course of November, and just in case anybody's wondering why I give, like, November, sometimes our stats aren't done on the short turnaround for, like, a meeting like this, because it usually begins in the first five days, so instead of giving a report that's missing stuff and incomplete, I just staggered them on, so that way I had everything complete. November fourth, twenty twenty-one, third watch crews encountered two subjects that were walking down roadway on Third Street. We approached him as a violation, pedestrian in the roadway, and made contact with the two individuals, one of them was known to us and known to have warrants. We secured that individual to confirm those warrants with the issuing agency. He was with a female who gave us a false name. While we were securing the one individual, the female took off running, they had foot pursuit with her. Once I called up to her, she began to fight him, she was, the takers were deployed, she was taken into custody, found to be using a false name, actually had a probation violation warrant, was in possession of drug paraphernalia, and was charged with the obstructing of official business of a police officer, so booked into the county jail on that. On November sixth, our third watch crews responded to Olive Hills apartment complex and reported a sex offense. It was determined to be kind of contained to a particular residence, it was not a stranger type encounter. We were able to identify and arrest the suspect in that incident. On November twelfth, third watch crews responded to Olive Hills apartments and reported shots fired. We're gonna talk about a couple here, we're adding a recurring theme here in Olive Hills. Upon arrival, the shots had ceased, there were one witness believed that the shots may have been fired from an upstairs window in one of the apartment complexes, somebody instructed going out the window, firing off into the air, and closed the window. We had no definitive address, we did check one address in the vicinity, we had no evidence of an offense at that time, so that's, you know, that's something that seems to continue to sporadically happen where we get these calls and if we have similar circumstances, so it's likely somebody is stepping out the back door, opening a window, popping off some rounds. On November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, third watch crews responded to Olive Hill apartment complex again and reported shots fired. This one was a little bit different because it was a altercation in one of the apartments where one of the individuals in that altercation called some other individuals who responded out and fired some shots at the individual that the original altercation involved, and as he was leaving that residence, they did fire some rounds at him, he was not struck, there were no injuries, and we were able to locate, identify, detain three subjects who were transported down to special investigation and subsequently charged with felony assault. On November twenty-fourth, second watch Jefferson crews responded to the twelve-hundred block of South Snyder Road on the report of a critical missing subject. Family members had reported to us that another family member who resided at a residence down in that area was missing, he lived alone, but when they went to check on him, he was not present there, so they called him in as a missing individual. He had a history of wandering off, and we had actually, not been too far past, dealt with similar circumstance there, so we established a perimeter around and had a canine response and conducted track on this individual. OSP had a plane up in the area on another detail in Montgomery County at the, at the time, so they came over and assisted us with some, uh, heat sensing radars and such from the air, and we had some drones come out and such, so, long story short, the individual had been in the care of another family member, and there was a communication breakdown, so that individual was located, safe and sound, he had gone to Walmart to do some shopping, but, you know, they're addressing some of the concerns that led to this, so... Traffic for the month of November, Jefferson Township investigated eleven crashes, it's an increase of five or eighty-three percent compared to October, or, no, I'm sorry, November of twenty twenty. Four of these were property damage, six were minor injury, with nine people injured total in one serious injury crash, two involved were hit and runs, two crashes involved pedestrians and none involved respective repairmen. Thursdays and Saturdays, we saw the most crashes with three crashes each day. Better to maintain reasonable patrol, among most common causative factor accounting for five of the crashes, and State Route four, US thirty-five in Farmersville, West Carrollton accounted for two of those crashes each. We made forty traffic stops in the township during the month of November, issued seventeen citations, ten for moving violations, and seven for non-moving. We had one new dumping complaint called in for November being followed up on by environmental crimes. Six hundred, six hundred thirty-six total calls for service, generated one hundred twenty-seven reports, thirty-one calls for forensics, five felony arrests, ten misdemeanor arrests, and thirty-two alarm complaints, fourteen domestic, so I'll just give you some of the highlights. Did ten, sorry, five prevent over checks at the bar, one robbery to an individual, and investigated three more suspicious subjects, situations, or vehicles, and nine death complaints, and seventy welfare checks. You get one of these packets, at least, I send these up at least quarterly, everything to the website for, to be uploaded, but there's some numbers back here, you know, for those that don't have them, to report various things, animal resource again, illegal dumping, if you have illegal dumping occurring in your area or your neighborhood or whatever, just call that in at two-two-five-help because we'll typically initially send a deputy out to generate a report, and then that gets followed up by the environmental unit, obviously the non-emergency line, and then some two-two, two-two-two stop for drug tips to go to Crime Stop or which, anything that affects out here, I get a copy of, so does our passports. Couple things that are on here real quick, our police cruiser did come in, there was some minor damage to it during transport, so we're working on dealership to get that corrected and fixed, and then that's all to begin. We should be getting that out here shortly on the road, so we'll be up to three total police cruisers in Jefferson Township, Mark Jefferson Township, so that'll, currently we have five deputies sharing two cars, so that kind of helps lower the wear and tear on the cruisers, and it's a good time for us because it takes so long to get a car, and then if you do get the car, getting all the parts to put together are problematic, it's shortage of everything everywhere. And then the last thing I just want to touch base on, we got a couple chances for inclement weather, is there any updates we need to make to call lists and such with some...
Yes, okay, yes, thank you for asking.
Yeah, all right, so just let me know how you're ready to happen at dispatch or whatever we need.
That increase in violent crime? Is it situated in a particular area?
So, in this township, basically everything's broken up into two zones, it's gonna be in one of the areas over, it's spread out between US thirty-five corridor and the flats off of that, or State Route four and the flats off of that. I can get you a breakdown of actual geozones if you want, but...
Just by what you're saying, I'm assuming the increase is on the thirty-five side?
I'd say I can get you a geozone on where everything occurs, but that is just township in general, and month after month, our incidents are consistent with what zones they occur in, so you're, you're looking at Route four, adjacent flats, or thirty-five adjacent flats, so it'll be broken down into one of those areas most likely, but I can definitely get you that if you need it.
Come back, I noticed when we had bad weather, people are shut in, I noticed a ton of your domestics and folks, but a lot of times when people are shut in, then you have problems.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of monitored that going into the pandemic.
I know, but you can't control that, you know, not until after it happens, then they call you.
Yeah, and hopefully, you know, there's resources out there if there's, you know, situations like that, places...
They will cool down after things get back to normal.
Yeah, and you know, the summer, we typically see that kind of too, when it gets really hot out and...
Bad weather when it's shut in, doesn't... When people are stuck at home, we get one call, they can't get out, so people can agitate with each other, it happens all the time.
So, will you start taking orders?
Yes.
Okay, we're good? Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Okay, so next is, uh, next is department report, I mean, excuse me, trustees comments and reports, but before I do that, I just, something we've got to talk about Sheila. So, the administrator, administrator's been put on paid administrative leave, he was overseeing the, by, by the paperwork overseeing the road department, so I'd like to make a motion that we post the job for, you know, the exact verbiage, how we'll title that, Roads Cemetery Operations Directive, we need to post a job for that position that Steve was going of the road department. Like to make a motion to do that, we need, just need a vote, yay or no? All in favor? A, yay?
Yes.
Both.
Opposed? Okay, so then, public, just so residents know, this has been an ongoing argument ever since Adrian left back spring of last year, you know, we, we are moving forward on the inter, the intercom telephone and common area, another thing, I did, I did speak with, with Hank, the guy that runs this building for the county, and we will have, they are wanting to mount a mailbox for us, a local mailbox, that we don't have issues with our mail going forward, that was a good conversation with him, so, I was happy to hear that, but, you know, we hear...
Go to the board.
Yeah, go to the board, so, you know, we've had, we've had the two neighbors we have come to the meetings, send us emails, people come to the, come to this place, knock on the door, bang on the window, nobody answers, and get irritated, they, I had a meeting with somebody today, and they're not here, you know, and I took off work to be here to do this meeting, and nobody answers, and so they, they went to talk to somebody, so they talked to our neighbors, and the neighbors are tired of dealing with that, so, we've put, we've installed, we're installing a phone system to take care of that, but where I'm going with this conversation is the fact that we need somebody to work the front window, that's not gonna happen tomorrow. I had a hard time in communicating and finding a job description for that person because this could involve several different jobs that different people were doing into one going down the road, and so we need to come up with a job description, but I would say by the next meeting, the next two weeks, we'll be posting the job for somebody to do that. We do, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, I mean, it's gone months and months and months, we have not had somebody in our front window, somebody answering the phone, somebody taking care of the residents, so, that is a big desire of us trustees, and it will happen, just give us a few weeks. So, as far as my report, you've heard me talk, preparing all the paperwork, I have spent some time driving the roads, I'll be over the road department, so I have been spending some time looking at what we need to do, a little bit of an approach, I have the desire and ability to do small repairs in-house, and we will do that in twenty twenty-two, so, that's my report. Sheila, you're next? She just, I mean, you're two, five days, the trustees, what time report you got?
I got quite good.
Okay, we're good?
Yes. First of all, I received, Tracy forwarded me an email regarding a citizen that had his tire, he had a pothole tire on the flat, so I contacted, I talked to the road department, and they got out there and fixed it, and the gentleman called Tracy and Victor, right? So, we were able to work together and get that addressed. I had another resident contact me via messenger regarding the pig on Blairwood and her attempts to try...
Excuse me, P-I-G, like baking on the hook?
Yeah, like, yeah.
Pig on Blairwood?
Yeah, it's a pig, it, it...
Pop belly?
They said it's a hog.
Pop belly, a small pop belly one or a full size?
They said it's a hog.
You're talking about baking on the hook?
Yeah, that's right. And, um, and her, her parents live next door, and so he's kind of tearing up the yard, but she had contacted, she's been trying to contact Justin, and she has not gotten any response. She did speak with the Department of Animal Resources, they came out, they were supposed to have written up some kind of recommendation and sent it to Justin, but nobody can, they can't even get in contact with it, so, I told her I would try to, I sent an email to Justin today to have him give me a call or email me so that I can speak with him, so I haven't heard anything yet.
What do you want to do, they want...
Is it somebody's pet or is it...
Or is it a feral pig?
I think it's somebody's pet, because they also have pit bull dogs too, so I don't know. know.
So they know, they kind of think they know who it belongs to or not?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in, it's somebody back yard.
Oh, okay.
He did write the whole adjustment because he should know what the, what is the code?
Right, right.
What they do.
Well, because it, uh, probably in the, the, the animal resources, uh, said that it shouldn't, it shouldn't be back there if it's not in its habitat.
For myself, uh, livestock take, right, take ten acres.
Yes.
Because the people across the street from me years ago had, there was a place there that had the, had horses and they were just skin and bones, and we tried numerous ways to get rid of them, ended up getting the zoning lady that was here back in the day, uh, made them get rid of them because they'd have ten acres, but that's, that's, that doesn't, well, that, uh, fits to a hog or not.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think Tracy, you've heard about that, um, it's been going on for a while, um, I didn't think Mary would talk about it, but anyways, um, I, I met with the road department and, um, was able to kind of introduce myself and, um, kind of hear their concerns, and, uh, we, we kind of talked about some things, um, how to get better and work together, um, and, um, address any of their concerns, and then, um, I'm looking at potentially, I have a meeting tomorrow about a possible, uh, Jefferson Township Town Hall, um, um, with, um, our state representative Blackshear, close Blackshear, so, um, I'll kind of follow up with their, you all, that you know how that comes out, um, I do, I, I talked with, uh, the chief line, and we were going to meet, um, however, um, he's out, he's gonna be out for a little bit, so, um, I want to kind of get with the fire department and, um, just kind of entertain, please myself with them, and I also want to, um, meet with Renta, Capitulay Flag, and, uh, sit down and just go over some things, uh, but that's pretty much my report. And I do want to say that I, I want to thank trustee McLaughlin and Tracy because they've done a lot of hard work, um, at the end of the year to get things together, and, um, I'm just grateful that you all were able to get that done and, and, and that we're, I look forward to working together in a, a, a positive atmosphere to change our township around and with the residents as well, um, I think tonight's meeting went really well, and I look forward to it, even the fire chief sent an email saying he hopes we, we have a sane and peaceful meeting.
Good.
Thank you, and welcome.
Pushed you to adjourn.
Second meeting.
We were adjourned at, uh, seven forty.
Oh, wow, geez, no, Pete, I think that's a record.
We had a minute and a half last meeting.
Well, but that wasn't an official meeting, that was just a, okay, no place here to do it.